Good evening and welcome to Conversations with the Candidates on Houston Media Source TV. I'm Gene Proce with the League of Women Voters of the Houston area. Tonight, we have candidates from Houston City Council at-large, position four. We're going to ask them some questions tonight, learn a little bit more about them, and ask for their positions on certain issues so that we can know more, and we can be better-informed voters. I'd like to welcome you all to Conversations with the Candidates. And we're going to start with Bill Baldwin. I'm going to ask you, in about two minutes, can you tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're running for at-large position four?
Thank you. Yes, I'm Bill Baldwin, running for at-large four. And my family was from this area. I grew up not far from here. Just working-class parents. They went to Galena Park High School, married there, and started a family. And we moved away when I was younger to Huntsville, where I went to high school and college. But I came back here in 1997 and started over in life and in a career I didn't know much about, starting from the ground up. I lived in a small garage apartment in the Heights, and I worked very hard in residential real estate. I bought the firm that I work for now about 12 years ago. And we've worked very hard to sell not only homes in Houston, but to help build up neighborhoods. And my experience with that residential real estate experience was that I was seeing neighborhoods that were faring far better than some others. Inequity within our city and the issues that were impacting those particular neighborhoods. So I've made it my passion the last couple of years to work very hard to address that inequity. I have volunteered extensively within the city of Houston, both in hurricane relief effort, and I've served on the Planning Commission for the last four years. And I just want to take my passion, my experience, my knowledge, and I want to put it to better use at City Hall, where I think we can bring more common-sense approach to government and make it more receptive for everyone within our city. So trying to address those issues of inequity is really what caused me to go ahead and take this next step.
Okay. Thank you very much. Next, Anthony D'ElTrofino.
I'm running for City Council because I truly believe that the city we love is at a crossroads. I think the pay-to-play establishment has ravaged your pocketbook and the city that we love. We aren't seeing results in our bayous, in our streets, in our garbage pickup, and it all goes back to a zero-accountability policy at City Hall. So much of what happens in the city depends on how big of a donor you are, if you've hosted a fancy fundraiser somewhere, and I think this is a disservice to taxpayers. We aren't seeing services taken care of in an efficient manner, and City Hall is more secretive than ever. The response to this is to elect watchdogs, and that is what I offer as your next council member. I'm proposing a wide variety of ethics reforms I believe will make this city a more transparent and honest place. I'd like to see the public release of a line-item list of every dollar in contract the city's spending money on, so that we, the taxpayer, have full transparency to where our dollars are or aren't being spent. I'd also like to end Turner's betrayal campaign against Houston's firefighters. We, the people, voted for Proposition B, and now our first responders aren't getting the fair pay they desperately need. We are losing firefighters by the month. It's a public safety crisis, and it has to stop. I'd also like to demand accountability for the lack of progress being made on our Harvey recovery. We aren't doing the proper process to receive accountability from the county, who we've given hundreds of millions of dollars to, and we also aren't asking the real questions as to why, after two years, only four homes were fixed in the Harvey Housing Recovery Program. All of this leads back to a lack of accountability and the promotion of the status quo at City Hall. I'd like to stop that as your next council member. My name is Anthony D'ElTrofino, and I'd appreciate your vote this November.
Thank you very much. Next, we'll go to Tico Hausmann.
Hi. Good evening. I'm Tico Hausmann, running for Houston City Council. I have over 17 years of government contracting experience. In addition to government experience, over the years, I have advocated with the Texas PTA for equity in our schools. I've also served as the Director of Development for Transportation Nonprofit, where we work with other agencies throughout the region to identify multimodal solutions for Houston. And over this time, I've spent a lot of time working with communities. And what I'm finding, or the lessons learned, is that after projects are built, they decide that it's time to come back and talk to citizens. And so I am running to advocate for the people. If I'm elected your next City Councilwoman, the next, one of the things I would like to look at is the city's MWBE program. It is a great program that provides opportunity for many in the city, but it has been mishandled, and there are certain areas that need fixing. But I submit that we do not need to end that program. I would also like to spend some time figuring out how we can be better partners in climate change. The city of Houston, transportation emits about 47% of our green emissions. And so while I do support public transportation, I really want us to look at more first- and last-mile solutions, which will provide transit to about 40% of Houstonians who don't currently, who aren't accessible to transit. So I'm Tico Hausmann, and I'm asking for your vote this November.
Thank you very much. Next, we go to Nick Helyer.
Hi. My name's Nick Helyer. I'm running for Houston City Council at-large four. I got my passion for municipal government when I was working in constituent services right here in District I in the east end of Houston. And when people had problems with the city working for them, they would call their district council member, and I was the one that dealt with the constituent services issues. It was then that I realized how important basic city services were to our citizens. And you can make a huge difference in somebody's life just for helping the city work for them. That's where I got my passion for municipal government. Our city's at a crossroads, and we can use Hurricane Harvey to lift us up and be better than we were before, or we can keep the status quo. And I'm going to make it my goal to fight for my fellow Houstonians when it comes to public safety, transit issues, also infrastructure, flood mitigation. And it's important that, with the amount of people that are coming to the city, in about the next 30 years, we're going to add about a million Houstonians. And we need to have somebody that has a vision, common-sense answers, data-driven decision-making, so that we can have the best city that we possibly can. Again, my name's Nick Helyer, and I'm running for Houston City Council at-large four. I hope I can count on your vote in November.
Thank you very much. We now have James Joe Joseph.
Hi, Gene. How you doing?
Doing well. How are you?
First of all, I want to say thanks to the Women League of Voters for giving us this opportunity today to discuss our platforms and why one of us will be your next Houston City Council at-large four. Once again, my name is James Joe Joseph. And the reason why I'm running for Houston City Council is because I love the opportunity that Houston has given me to prosper as a minority male in this great city. Houston is the fourth-largest city in the United States, and soon to be the third. And there are some great attributes that we can bring to the city. If we can put a man on the moon, why couldn't we alleviate the two-hour commute from Metro to, not Metro, from Intercontinental Airport to downtown through Metro? It takes two hours to commute, and we have other cities that are doing greater things, and we need to study best practices and bring some of those best practices to our city so that we could be the third-largest city in the United States. Now, the three positions that I'm running on to be your next City Council member are smart transit development, economic development, and crime and safety. I've been the Vice President of the Super Neighborhood. I also am the President of Blocks Organizing Neighborhood Defense, which is an organization started by then. Police Chief Lee Brown is a way to curb crime in our neighborhoods, and we've done an awesome job in doing that. We hadn't had a crime at one point in our community in over two years, and I'm very proud that I'd say that I had something to do with that. My name is James Joe Joseph, and I'd love to be your next City Councilman, City Council at-large four. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we turn to Letitia Plummer.
Good evening, Houston. I am Dr. Letitia Plummer. I'm your candidate for Houston City Council at-large, position number four. You know, Houston is my city. My family has deep roots in Houston. My grandfather was one of the first African-American judges in the state of Texas. My grandmother was an educator at Wheatley High School. My father has spent his entire career in public health and making sure that there's wellness and health with the citizens of Houston. I'm a proud daughter of a mother from East Africa, so I'm a daughter of an immigrant, so I understand diversity. And probably one of my most exciting moments are having my three boys. I've got three young adults. One is in college, and two are in high school. And I'm running for City Council because I want to carry that baton. I want to continue the good work that my family has done for this particular community. And I want to create a Houston that my boys will come back and live in and not move and go to college somewhere else and stay there. I want to create a Houston that has equity and a respect for all citizens, regardless of what their socioeconomic background is, what their race or culture is, and regardless if they're from here or not. My focus is economic development, making sure that we can create true economic opportunities, not the ones developers come in and say that we need to have. Creating community healthcare platform to where people that don't have access to healthcare can blend that and have the resources that they need to take care of themselves and their families. And also flooding, making sure that we hold the city accountable to where drainage fees are used and taxed against our taxpayers. Those money and resources are going to where they should be going to ensure that we have the infrastructure that we do need. I would love to have your vote. I want to earn your vote. I am Dr. Letitia Plummer. I'm your candidate for Houston City Council, position number four.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Jason Rowe.
Thank you. My name is Jason Rowe. I'm a candidate for at-large, number four, for Houston City Council. I'm running to be your City Councilman. First, let me take the time to thank the League of Women Voters for doing this, holding this valuable discussion. I think this conversation is very important for multiple reasons, and I look forward to the topics we're going to get into. But I do want to take a moment to introduce myself. I am a small-business owner. I'm also an attorney who represents individuals in small businesses before the city. And so I have seen a lot of the issues that Houston has firsthand. I love Houston. I love the diversity of Houston. I love the spirit of Houston. I obviously love the food, but I think it's important that we face these issues and we actually address the problems that we have. When it comes to flooding, this is an area where we've obviously been neglected for quite some time. We can literally not afford another flood in Houston. We cannot afford even a heavy rain event like Harvey, but we cannot afford the devastating effects because we're not prepared. And as the administration pointed out a couple months ago, we are still not prepared for another Harvey or another flood. And so we need to do the things that are necessary to address that issue immediately and not waste time on that. When it comes to public safety, we need to work on reducing crime. Our crime in our city went up 25% for the murder rate for last year. Cities like Chicago and LA saw a decrease in crime rates, while Houston's went up. That's unacceptable. We have 5,200 police officers for a population of 2.5 million people, and that's one of the lowest ratios per capita among America's large cities. That needs to change. We need to hire more police officers. We need to get them on the streets and out of their cars and actually into the communities. We also need to end the mayor's campaign against the firefighters. These firefighters deserve to be paid. The voters have voted, and that should be enforced. Lastly, I want to work on the pay-to-play. We need to work on government transparency and improving government transparency so that everyone knows where the money is going, so that the minorities and women in business program can continue working and actually make an effective difference in our communities. My name is Jason Rowe. I'm running for at-large, number four. Thank you.
And finally, we turn to Erica McCruchan.
Hi. I'm Erica McCruchan, candidate for Houston City Council at-large, position four. I am not a native Houstonian. I am from Florida. And I've been in Houston, though, for 30 years. 30 years of Houston has been my home. I married to a wonderful husband for 30 years. We pastor a church. It's Join Us Fellowship Church. I'm also a business owner. We own our own healthcare business where we work to work with small businesses, small commercial properties. We work with clinics. If you've been in a DeVita or Fresenius, chances are we've been in one of those for remodeling, doing general contracting. I'm also a president of the Kirkwood Civic Club, where my community is southeast Houston here. I was in a changing community. My community was changing and transitioning, and I became a part of the, actually, president of the Kirkwood Civic Club. And as part of that Civic Club, I brought back my community. I revived that community and brought back, life back into my community, where we are thriving now and having new ownership. I'm running because I want to represent my city. Our city is facing some great challenges. We're a great city, and Houston needs principled, dedicated, and committed leadership at City Hall to deal with the pay-to-play, to deal with all of the other inequities that's going on in other communities. I'm a community-based leader. I believe in raising up leadership in the communities through the super neighborhoods, through the civic clubs, working with them and causing them to reach out to City Hall and become, to outreach to City Hall and become an asset to City Hall. So I am Erica McCruchan, and I hope to gain your vote also on November the 5th.
Thank you very much. Candidates, thank you all for answering that question. I have another question for you, and this one, we're going to start back with Ms. McCruchan again. This is going to be a broad question. You're representing at-large, so you're responsible to the entire city. The city is so diverse. You've all mentioned some problems that people in the city face. How are you going to represent all those issues? And how are you going to keep in contact with the diverse constituents? Ms. McCruchan, we'll start with you.
That's a good question. My plan would be to work with, go in the communities and raise up leadership in those communities through the super neighborhoods, through the civic club organizations, through the faith-based community, through businesses, working with businesses, coalishing together and meeting on a regular basis to meet the needs and the demands of what those communities want. Each community and throughout city have their own specific needs, their own specific desires. And leadership in those given communities, if we can empower them as City Council at-large position, as a council member, and work with the leadership within those communities, those people in those communities can get the job done that they want in their communities. So my plan would be is to work with, in coalition with all of the businesses and all of the civic and the super neighborhoods in those communities. I look forward to working with the citizens of Houston. Our government works from the bottom up, and that's the uniqueness of our city and the uniqueness of America's government, is that we're not a people who have a, we are people who have a government, not a government who has a people. And so we, the people, can make changes in our community if we empower leadership within the communities in which they reside. Again, I'm Erica McCruchan, candidate for Houston City Council at-large, position four. Number one on the ballot.
Thank you very much. Mr. Rowe?
When it comes to, we are the most diverse city in America, and that's something we should be very proud of. But we do have these challenges in different communities. You know, what works in Kingwood is not necessarily going to work in District B or District D. And so we have to be able to engage those communities at a local level and actually figure out how to work with those communities and what they need in their communities. So on, you know, issues like education, keeping our kids safe, you know, in District B or D, it may mean partnering with groups like Boys and Girls Clubs, bringing more of those into the community, partnering with Big Brothers, Big Sisters, and encouraging those partnerships in the community with those groups that are already there and doing a great job with companies and businesses that are locally around. We have so many at-large council members that we never see until it's time for election. We need to be out in the communities, out at the events. When it comes to flooding, we need to be aware of what's going on in each of these communities. We're redrawing the flood maps, and a lot of the time, we've already passed amendments to Chapter 19, but we don't know what the new flood maps are even going to be or what the issues are going to be around the city. We have to make solutions that are actually going to be particular to the communities that need them. And so when it comes to flood maps, we need to perhaps be looking at redrawing some of the issues in Chapter 19 after we've already done that. Chapter 19 is the flood ordinance, so as far as raising grades and things like that. But we need to be able to engage those communities, engage the faith-based communities there. They're going to be the ones, the first ones, are going to know exactly what's going on in their communities. They're going to be the ones who know where the needs are, where the issues are, be a voice for the people. So when they call, have it where they can't just call a district councilman. Our phones are open. We're out in the communities. We're at the events. This campaigning doesn't stop now. We go to events all over the city. I'm proud of that, and I love that. But you have to be willing to go to events in Fall Creek, in Northside, and Edo, and 3rd Ward, around the city of West Houston. We have to be able to go to these events and keep going to these events once we're elected. This isn't just a one-time thing. We're in, then we stop. We need to be at these events all the time, engaging with people, listening to the voters, and what they need.
Thank you very much. Ms. Plummer, diverse city. How do you represent all the issues? And how do you keep in touch with the constituents?
And I think that's a really great question. As probably one of the most diverse candidates in this particular race, you know, I was raised in a family to where my mother was from East Africa, Indian background, Arab background, and my father was African-American. So really understanding the different cultural barriers and ways in which we communicate with different cultures makes me a really strong candidate for this particular race. You know, I'm a doctor, so I've been practicing medicine for 20 years, and I run a business with about 16 employees. So one thing I do pride myself in is, one thing, listening, and, number two, diagnosing. In Houston, we have a serious problem. I think we do not empower our communities enough. So one of the first things that I would like to do as your councilwoman, I would like to create district liaisons, and those liaisons will be our leaders, particularly in that community. And those liaisons will work with the super neighborhood clubs and the civic organizations to make sure that we can create a task force. And that task force will report to our office. But I believe it's incredibly important to understand that we, as at-large members, are not here alone. We've got district representatives that we have to support and understand because they have the pulse in their communities. They know exactly what's going on. So working hand-in-hand with them and making sure that we're all on the same page and empowering those district representatives, those task force members, and those communities is the way in which I truly believe that we can get the answers answered, create solutions, tangible solutions for our community, to make sure that we all can thrive. Because right now, equity in Houston is a major problem, and that is one particular issue that I want to level. I really want to level the playing field.
All right. Thank you very much. Mr. Joseph?
Yes, sir, Gene. Once again, I'm proud to be a Houstonian. You know, I was born and raised in Houston. It's a great place to live, and it's a diverse place to live. Once again, we're the fourth-largest city here in the United States. And I understand that a lot of the candidates, you know, would like to do some great things, you know, in this great city. But I would like to talk about some of the things that I've already done, which will propel, help propel this city. You know, we need to make sure, I am the CEO of a nonprofit community development organization. We need to develop partners like I have, strategically-developed partners within our communities. One of the issues that I have in our communities is food deserts. There are food deserts all around the city of Houston, and not only food deserts, but just good quality foods to eat. I've been a fighter for that for a very long time, especially when it deals with climate control. I've graduated from Texas Southern University and developed seven community gardens as a way to help us, our senior citizens and our kids, to develop in our communities. So I am the only candidate here who has gone to City Hall and advocated for food deserts in our neighborhood and have gotten a unanimous decision across the board, Democrats and Republicans, from the mayor, from Kubeas, to Amanda Edwards, to Mike Knox, and many others. So bringing diversity and how we're going to do these things, or bringing all of us together as one to make sure that we get the things that we need in our communities. So I got a unanimous decision to build a grocery store in one of our communities, and that grocery store is being built right now today.
Okay. Thank you very much. Mr. Helyer, diverse city. How are you going to represent all the issues? How are you going to keep in touch with all those constituents?
I think that's a key question, because we do live in the most diverse city in the country. So having worked at City Hall and witnessing some good council members and some bad, the best way to have a staff that reaches out to everybody, first of all, is to have a diverse staff. So ensuring that the staff members that you do have on council represent the entire city. And then how do I, as a council member, speak to the city as a whole? I think it's important that we understand that this is a full-time job. This is an 80-hour-a-week job. You get up in the morning. You get to work at 8:00 a.m. You work on city issues until 4:00, and then you go out to civic clubs and super neighborhoods and Democratic clubs and Republican clubs and union halls and business meetings. And being there on the front lines of our city, that is where you figure out what the issues are. That's where you figure out who has the biggest problems in the city. So I think that's the best way that you do it, is, one, being present in all the communities in Houston, and, two, having a diverse staff that can help you answer the questions.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Hausmann?
So one of the ways that I would see myself being in touch with everyone is to work a little bit more closely with the other district council members. I have a reputation for building coalitions. When I was over the Metro Small Business Department, I piloted the Interagency Mentor-Petagee Program. We bought on three partners, and today, that program still exists with seven municipal agencies working together to promote and develop small businesses within our community. Additionally, I think diversity, it surpasses culture. There's diversity in business, and one of the things I'd like to see, especially in our innovation and technology area, is more seats at the table. There are, there was a task force that pulled many, many resources in from the Greater Houston Partnership, Rice Alliance, but what was missing from that was startups. And so what I'd like to see the city do is take the position of public-private or private corporations, where they have now invited startups and to help them with some of their challenges. And so I would also continue the relationships with all of the different organizations, business chambers, and wonderful agencies and entities that I've had the honor to speak with and asking for their vote.
Thank you very much. Mr. D'ElTrofino, again, a diverse city. How are you going to represent all the issues? How are you going to keep in touch with all the constituents?
You know, it's so funny, because our mayor's campaign slogan right now is "Lift Every Voice." But what we've seen over the past few years is the only voices that are being lifted are the wealthiest donors and the people closest to him that are raising money for himself and other rubber-stamp politicians. And this is doing a disservice to you, a regular resident of the city, that wants city service taken care of in your neighborhoods. You're seeing a situation now where we have an Office of Business Opportunity, where contracts should be going to disadvantaged contractors in our most vulnerable neighborhoods. And what's happening is they're being doled out in the hundreds of millions to the wealthiest donors. What you're seeing in Uptown Ters, where they're hoarding millions and millions of dollars, keeping those dollars from going into our most vulnerable neighborhoods. That's why we're not seeing results. When you see Metro wasting hundreds of millions of your tax dollars on rail projects that aren't serving the transit needs of our city, this is what happens when a city that is as diverse as Houston is failing, because our politicians have failed us. And if we're going to get around that, if we're going to stop this era of rubber-stamp politicians holding us back from a future and keeping that future for the highest bidder and the politically connected, we need to elect watchdogs. I will fight for every person in this city to have a fair shot at the city they love, whether it's getting a contract that will be given out to the fairest bidder, whether it's having your services taken care of. I will go in every neighborhood that has a problem that is being treated unfairly and right that wrong. So much of what we see right now is as the result of corruption, and what we need to do is take a stand against it this November at the ballot box. I hope you join me.
Thank you very much. Mr. Baldwin, we return to you.
Thank you. We all agree that our city is great because of the diversity that we have, and we all embrace that diversity. But we have to embrace our differences as well as that diversity. And you have to be willing to understand people on their level. I've been a proponent of creating more opportunity for people to participate in government. I don't think it's fair that we expect people to go down to City Hall and pay a large fee to park and go to speak Tuesday afternoon or Wednesday morning. City Hall and city government should be conducted in the evening, when more people could participate, and it would be fairer to all. The Terses and the management districts and these other authorities that meet in lawyers' offices and behind closed doors need to be livestreamed. There needs to be a video recording. It needs to be accessible to all of us. We ought to be able to see what they said three months ago or three years ago. I feel like if more people were watching, some of the votes would be a little bit different. But making it accessible, making it transparent, making it where people can participate in a timeframe that's good for them. Listening is imperative, empowering the people, giving them a voice, and building upon the collaboration that was mentioned here today. This council needs to work with one another in a strong, merril form of government. If you don't band together, you're going to get taken advantage of. I intend to walk across the aisle and hold hands with the other people on City Council and build coalitions, coalitions among us at City Hall, coalitions with communities, coalitions with those that know more than we do in the private sector and in the nonprofit sector, so that we can give everyone a voice at a time and place at which they can participate so that they can feel better about the government that works for them.
Thank you very much. Thank you again, candidates, for the responses. I'm going to ask a I'm going to ask a tough question. Now, many of you said you were business owners. In Houston, we like economic development, but many candidates from other districts have been saying that, you know, there's, some businesses are taking advantage of the situation. There's a lot of trash, there's a lot of problems in their areas related to business. So how can Houston, at one time, have both economic development and yet maintain the quality of life we like to have? So we'll start, Mr. Baldwin, with you. You've got a little over a minute to answer this question.
I've traveled the world and seen that very thing, where there's a high quality of living and there's economic prosperity for all. There are examples out there that we're going to have to see. Our issue is not necessarily inequity with economic development, it's a lack of enforcement of the rules and regulations that we have. Where there is illegal dumping or there is graffiti in certain neighborhoods, it's because we're not doing our job as a city to enforce the rules that we already have on the record book. I believe that we need to enforce the rules or remove the rules, and we need to make it easier for small businesses to participate. Our permitting process is inefficient, and it doesn't serve the people well, and it's just an example of government not responding to the needs of the people. It needs to be thought of like the private sector, like we would do in business, and when it doesn't work, we either go out of business or are replaced. Government needs to get out of the way where it's not doing a good job, and it needs to become more efficient and face the reality that it needs to move itself into the 2020s and not be stuck back in some precedent from long ago that didn't make, didn't serve the people well. Government should serve the people that are paying the bill, and we should hold them accountable to do so.
Thank you very much. Mr. Del Trofino, the same question.
Well, on the quality of life issue, I think right now you're seeing a city where 2.6 million pounds of recycling were thrown in the landfill. That's a city that's failing Houstonians. You're looking at a city where you pay a drainage tax, where only 50% of it goes to actual drainage projects. That's a city that's failing Houstonians. And might I add, when you ask to see the line item of where the other 50% is going, City Hall will charge you an exorbitant amount of money. The taxpayer right-to-know does not exist in this city. The way we improve the quality of life in this city is by getting honest with accountability to our contractors that we pay with our tax dollars to deliver services to us. Now, on the business side of things, so many small businesses, I've heard so many stories, are run out of town before they even start because of burdensome permitting processes, regulations that are keeping economic development from happening, to regular small business owners that want to get a leg up in this city. We need to stop that. We need to make this city work for us again, and that requires us to deliver basic city services, something we've failed to do on potholes, on trash and recycling, on flooding, and so much more.
Thank you very much. Ms. Hausmann.
Jean, would you repeat the question?
So we want economic development in Houston, but we also want a quality of life that's good. How can you have economic development and quality of life as the representative at-large for District Four, or Position Four, sorry?
Sure. So I think there is an initiative that is just getting started, Complete Communities, which I think addresses that, that looks at the individual needs of communities. It provides groceries, it provides education, it provides job opportunity and transit so that each community can develop and grow and ideally expand out into the Houston metroplex area. As it relates to government contracting and fairness and economic development, I would love to see a city manager who would be in charge of procurement and economic development opportunities. That way, you completely eliminate the perception of cronyism, and everybody gets a fair shot at opportunities to do business with the city.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Helyar.
I think this goes hand-in-hand. When we have strong business community, we have strong communities itself. When we have strong workers that are paid a good living wage, then we have strong businesses. So I think they go hand-in-hand, and the city's role in this is to provide solid infrastructure, to ensure that we have enough drainage, to ensure that we have smooth roads, to ensure that we have ways for people to get around the city, to alleviate our traffic, and to have enough money in our budget to pay the firefighters the wage they deserve and to increase the number of police officers we have on the street. So I think if we focus on core city issues, that this problem of kind of inequity in, between business and quality of life will solve itself. So we have to ensure that we give the citizens and the businesses the infrastructure that they need to succeed.
Thank you very much. Mr. Joseph.
Sorry, Jean. Jean, Hurricane Harvey is a prime example of what we have here in Houston. Some neighborhoods, such as Kingwood, Cashmere Garden, other neighborhoods, you know, of different economic status, and what we saw there when Hurricane Harvey happened was money going to other influential neighborhoods but not coming to those underserved areas. Hurricane Harvey hit us all, and it hit us all equally, you know, both sides of towns. So when it comes to those things, we need to make sure that we're holding our officials accountable to distribute those funds in the best way needed and not just the people who needed, who are influential and who's already at the table. You know, the small people at the table never get what they need here. So that's what I'm fighting for, for the small people in the city of Houston, so we can become a greater city and become that third-largest city in the United States. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Plummer. So let me ask you again, what is it possible, and how will you represent to have both economic development in Houston and to maintain a good quality of life?
I think that's a really great question. You know, unfortunately, in this particular city, zip codes matter. If you live in a zip code that has high property values, you're going to have your police officers come faster, you're going to have your roads fixed faster, you're going to make sure you have good grocery stores and healthcare centers in that area. If you live in a zip code with low property values, then you typically don't have that same support. So the first thing that I want to see is, you know, is making sure that zip codes don't matter anymore, that Houston is respected in a way that every single Houstonian is treated fairly and has access to all of it. You know, we often say that gentrification happens when the developers move in, and I kind of disagree with that. I believe that gentrification happens when our young people move out, because that's when those homes become abandoned, and that's when generational homes are not given to their children anymore. We need to create communities in which our young people want to stay there, to where they want to bring their businesses there and make sure they raise their families from a generational perspective. You know, if developers come into our communities, we should honestly demand them to put a community center there, to put a senior area there as well, take care of our seniors, and make sure that everyone is taken care of and equity is in place.
Thank you very much. Mr. Rowe.
Quality of life is one of those issues that really hits home right away, because it starts at the home. So it means that when you're leaving the house, you don't have to worry about whether your trash is going to get picked up that day, that week, or in three weeks. We have failed as a city to provide fundamental services. You shouldn't have to worry about the next heavy rain, whether or not floodwaters are going to enter your home, because the city has failed at applying the drainage fee properly over the last, you know, seven years. From 2012 to 2019, there were $900 million collected in the drainage fee, and just over 51%, the best estimate, is what we've spent on drainage. That's a basic quality-of-life issue. Our roads are basic quality-of-life issues. When we work on fundamental city services, trash pickup, police, fire, response times, keeping those response times higher by keeping the firefighters we have from hemorrhaging and leaving our city after we paid money to train them, that's when you can actually cause, bring the quality of life up and keep the quality of life up in neighborhoods across Houston. And it does come down to keeping some of our young people there. So we have business incubators right now. So we have the new group in the medical center that's going to be investing in businesses there, the group downtown that's taking over the Sears Building, allowing and incentivizing people in the communities to stay in the communities and build businesses there and invest back into those communities is what's going to help Houston grow quickly.
Thank you. Ms. McCutcheon.
Yes. Economic development and quality of life go hand-in-hand. There is really no real, the fundamental differences between the haves and the have-nots is going back to my point, leadership in communities. If we go into the communities where there have been low economic areas, develop leadership, develop coalitions, faith-based community, the businesses that are there, banks, schools, all of those things, working together, it will produce a better community, equity will come back into the communities, people will work in their own communities and bring about the communities that they desire. Leadership is the major and the fundamental thing, and I want to bring that leadership and be one to help bring that leadership to those communities, through working with those super neighborhoods and bringing back, dealing with that gentrification process and bringing back a community, making that community come alive again and bringing it back so that people will want to live in those communities, businesses want to come, and people are safe.
Thank you all for answering those questions. Ms. McCutcheon, we're going to go back and start with you again, and this will be our final question as we make our way through. You've got two minutes to answer this question. It's a two-part question. If you're elected to the at-large Position Four on Houston City Council, what is the first thing you're going to do? And why should people vote for you, and how can they find out more about your campaign?
The first thing that I would do once I get into my office at City Hall is that I'm going to establish myself with a relationship with the city council members there and the mayor. And then I'm going to begin to unfold my idea of working with communities and working with our super neighborhoods. I'm the candidate for the job because I understand how community works. I work in my community. I've brought back a community that was dying. I understand how these things, how communities transition and how important leadership is to bring communities back. You can reach out to me on my website at EricaMcCutcheonforCityCouncil.com. I'm on Facebook at EricaForCityCouncil. That's E-R-I-C-K-A-F-O-R, not the number four, but EricaForCityCouncil.com. Facebook, EricaForCityCouncil also. You can reach out and find me there. I look to see everyone on November the 5th, look forward to getting their votes. Remember, Erica McCutcheon, number one on the ballot, City Council at-large, Position Four.
Thank you very much. Mr. Rowe.
My name is Jason Rowe, and I'm running again for at-large Number Four. My first priority once I get into office will be flooding. It has to be flooding. Again, we cannot afford to wait. We can't afford to wait any longer on finding the solutions that work. So when it comes to flooding, we have to get in there, figure out exactly where that money's gone, why the money's not been spent appropriately, and actually address those issues. We have to increase government transparency for bidding and contracts and make sure that the money's being spent the right way and not to the cronies as it is currently. So addressing those issues is going to be critical and key. Inviting community leaders to meet with me, coming out and meeting with them in the communities, not waiting for them to necessarily have to come down to City Hall, but going out to them and find out what the issues are in their communities, where we need to be addressing those things first, and find out how we can help them and how we can help each of the communities grow in different ways. Everyone, each community in Houston has their own issues. District B has different issues than Kingwood. And you have to be able to figure out exactly what those issues are in those communities and how you can work with them and work with the areas that need it most first. So my name is Jason Rowe. I'm running for Houston City Council at-large, Number Four. I'm the best candidate for the job because I have the experience. There's a lot of people up here who have not run before, me, myself included, and you need someone that has experience of fighting the city. I'm a small business owner. I'm used to fighting the city on many issues, and I'm happy to fight the city again. I want to take a second of my time to thank the Legal Women Voters again. We are at a pivotal moment in the story that will be Houston, and I know you guys, as an organization, are used to those pivotal moments in your history. I hope you'll join me. I hope you'll vote for me on November 5th, or early voting begins October 21st. Again, my name is Jason Rowe, at-large Four. I'm running to be your voice on City Council, and I hope you'll join me. RoweForHouston.com, R-O-W-E-F-O-R-Houston.com, or you can find me on Facebook at Jason Rowe for Houston. I look forward to your support, and I look forward to continuing the conversation once I'm in office. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Letitia Plummer.
Yes. I believe the first thing that I would do would create my task force within my independent districts. I would meet with my district colleagues as well and also my at-large members and make sure we're all on the same page, introduce ourselves to each other, and get a good gauge of where we are, our likes and our differences. I believe I'm the best person for this job for multiple reasons. I'm a business owner, so I really have been balancing budgets and hiring people and taking care of folks for the last 20 years. I sit on the board for, that supports the community healthcare centers that here is counting. So I understand how important it is, how important community health is for our communities and how a healthy Houston is the best Houston. I understand business. I understand economic opportunities and development because I know the challenges that small businesses have. I know that if we're affected by a flood, 75% of us are not going to reopen. I know how difficult it was for my particular business to thrive when Harvey happened. I know how hard it is to get funding and lending to make sure, you know, our companies survive. I do understand those things, and those are issues that I want to bring to the city of Houston. I'll tell you, I'm a proud, I was the founder of the Missouria County Legal Women Voters Chapter, had to step down from that position because of my run. So organizing is what I love to do. I worked on the Hillary Clinton campaign on her small business task force. So I know from a national level what it takes to get small businesses to thrive. I'm your candidate. I'm from Houston. I'm rooted in Houston. My family has done amazing things, and I just want to carry that torch. I want this city to be a place where our children stay and are rooted and can thrive economically. So I am your candidate. I am Dr. Letitia Plummer. I'm your candidate for this Position Four for Houston. You can find me on Facebook for LetitiaPlummerForHouston. My website is PlumberForHouston.com, and on all your social media. I'd love to have you join the team. We're excited about this race. We want to do the best for this race. This seat is crucial to make sure that all people are represented in the city of Houston. Thank you so much.
Thank you. James Joe Joseph.
Yes, Jean. The first 100 days in office, I will follow what I've been doing, and that's my hashtag, as that is, to unify Houston. Once again, Houston is the fourth-largest city and a very diverse city. I will bring the faith base together. I will bring all ethnicities together. I will bring all genders together within our communities. Within the first 100 days, all the civic leaders in our organization, in our city, have spoken to me and asked me a lot of questions. And those questions are, Joseph, how do we unify? And Joseph, how do we get resources as community leaders so we can help you develop our communities? So in my first 100 days of being in office, I plan on unifying our communities, not only civic leaders, but also law enforcement, firefighters, and all our EMS workers who work diligently through the city. I can be reached at JamesForJoseph, that's JosephForHouston.com. I have the easiest name of the 139 candidates on the ballot. My name is James Joseph, and that's something I'm very proud of, to be honest with you, because it's something that I have to live up to. And I've begun more and more each and each and every day to live up to that name. It's a name to be proud of, and it's a name that was given to me by my great-grandfather. So my name is James Joe Joseph, and I'm running to be your next city councilman of the city of Houston. And if we can put a man on the moon, why can't we make this city greater? My name is James Joseph. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Nick Helyar. Again, what's the first thing you're going to do when you get into office, if you get elected? And tell us more about your campaign, how to get in touch with you.
I think the most important issues facing our city right now, what I would focus on day one, is infrastructure. Nobody should go to bed at night worried that if it's raining that they're going to wake up to water in their homes. So ensuring that we have better drainage, our city drainage system is completely inadequate. Two, the roads that we drive to work on every day are in complete disrepair. And ensuring that our tax dollars are spent efficiently to focus on infrastructure issues is going to be my number-one priority. The reason that I believe that I should get your vote on November 5th is I've worked at City Hall. I understand what it takes to be a successful council member. If you want something done right, get a staffer to do it. And I spent the majority, you know, of my 20s working in local municipal government, and I understand how to get things done. I've got a passion for this job. I've got a passion for municipal government, and it's not a sexy job. It's not, you know, it's not interesting to everybody, but I want to make sure that when you turn your faucet on, that the water comes out. When you go to work, you have a smooth road to drive on, that your trash cans are picked up on time. So I think it's these core issues that are important to our city. That's what I'm going to focus on. And you can learn more about me at nickhelyar.com. My last name is spelled H-E-L-L-Y-A-R, so N-I-C-K-H-E-L-L-Y-A-R. That's Nick Helyar for Houston City Council at-large Four. And remember, when you ask, are you going to vote for Nick in at-large Four? Hell, yeah.
Okay. Thank you very much. Tico Hausmann.
Yes, sir. The first thing I would do when I'm elected is to take a look at the Office of Business Opportunity. Small businesses and minority businesses are the engine to our city. They're the job creators, and... creators, and as it stands, if you are contracted with the city, it may take you anywhere from 90 to 100, to 20 days to get paid. That's unacceptable. There's also a backlog of certifications which are needed for these firms to be able to qualify for federal projects. We've got to do better as far as that's concerned. I would also like to look at how we integrate startups into the process. As it stands, there's no procurement mechanism that will allow for startups to compete, because the current system favors experienced large firms who may not have the solution. I'm the best candidate for Houston City Council at-large, because I'm uniquely positioned. I've worked 17 years in government procurement, I've innovated programs, I've put small businesses to work. I am a small business owner, I am a founding member of League of, I'm sorry, of Higher Heights for America, and also League of Women Voters Rising Star in 2017. You can reach me at tico, T-I-K-O, forhouston.com, or ticoforthepeople.com. I'm Tico Hausman, and I'm asking for your vote this October 21st to be your next City Councilwoman at-large.
Thank you very much. Anthony Dolcefino.
The first thing I get started on on day one is rolling out the most aggressive pro-transparency ethics reform platform in the entire city of Houston. That includes the public release of a line-item list of every dollar in contract the city's spending money on, so you, the taxpayer, can see where your money's going, creating an independent inspector general to investigate instances of financial malfeasance, corruption, and waste. And this also includes a push to ban political contributions from contractors who are doing business with the city. If we truly want to stop the pay-to-play establishment, we need to get real about it, and this is how you do it. I think I am the best candidate for this position, because if you've been listening closely tonight, you'll learn that not, no other candidate in this forum has said the name Turner. I am not afraid to take on our mayor, or his failures, or whoever the mayor is, in the future. I will be the watchdog candidate on City Council, fighting for you, fighting for fair treatment, fighting for our city services being taken care of, and fighting against the waste and corruption that has ravaged this city. You can reach me at anthonydolcefino.com, dolcefino is spelled D-O-L-C-E-F-I-N-O, or go on my Facebook page, we've got a nice big page, a lot of video content, stuff for you to check out. I really would appreciate your support this November. There's a change coming at City Hall, I can feel it, and I want to be a part of the change wave, bringing true ethics reform to City Hall, fighting the corruption, and getting Houston back to work for you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Bill Baldwin, you have the final word.
Thank you so much. I am Bill Baldwin, and I am running for City Council at-large, Four. The first thing I'll do when elected is listen. I'm going to go out to the communities, and I'm going to listen, and then I'm going to listen some more, because we have so many people with a voice in our city, but they don't feel like they're being heard. And the next thing I'm going to do is collaborate with my council members, because the loftiest ideas and these great ideas that these candidates come up with will never be accomplished without collaboration amongst themselves. You will not get anything accomplished as a city council member if you can't convince your other fellow council members of its importance. And then you're going to have to work together to solve the problems of our city. We hear a lot about fighting, you hear a lot about division, you hear a lot about what's wrong with the city. People in the city know what's wrong with it. They want to be part of the solution, and they want to be given an opportunity to have a voice and to say. And the only thing a truly effective council member can do is to listen to those people and give them their voice, and then work collectively to the solutions that we all have. I'm Bill Baldwin, and you can find me at Baldwin for Houston, or you can call me at 281-850-6862, or text me. I'm here for you, I want to be your voice, I want to listen to what you have to say, I want to be your advocate for a better, smarter city for everyone.
First of all, thanks, everyone, for coming out tonight, for helping to answer some of the questions that we have, to let us learn a little bit more about yourself, so that we can become better-informed voters. Every year, the League of Women Voters of the Houston area publishes its Voters' Guide. That's where we pose a set of questions to candidates from a variety of elections, including all of the Houston City Council elections, the mayor's election, and the controllers' election. We're also looking at HISD and Houston Community College. The Voters' Guide will be available in mid-October. You can pick up the print version, or you can go to lchwouston.org, and there will be an online version as well. We also have the, it'll also be on the League's 411 app. Our handy-dandy Voters' Guide is also out. There's a lot of questions because of new ways of voting that went into effect this year. You can go to lchwouston.org to find that handy-dandy Voters' Guide. Our Rising Star program is about to start. Applications are going on through Sunday, September the 15th, that's just a few days away. So please apply now. Again, go to our website for more information. And in just a few days, we're going to be posting this video, in case you missed it or you want to see it again. We'll be posting it on Houston Media Source's YouTube channel, and it'll also be posted on our Facebook page, L-W-V-Houston. For the League of Women Voters of the Houston area, I'm Jean Price. Thank you for watching this conversation with the candidates on Houston Media Source TV.